Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of November 28th. We are in the third floor of the fire facility, and it's nice to see all these faces here. It's great. My name is Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board, and I'd love for my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting with Gary.
Thank you for coming. I'm Gary Corey.
Hi, Tom Haley.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hello, everyone, I'm Jeanne Connor.
Hi, everyone, just on this time zone now, Sarah Perrin.
And I'm Bruce Lee Clark, my microphone doesn't light, so I won't take that personally.
Okay, thank you. And also with us tonight is our town manager, Stu Hurt, Nancy Lively, who takes lovely minutes at every turn, Jonas Bivak, who's on the lights and attack tonight, and Josh Boucher, who is filming this for Cat TV, which we very much appreciate. So, let's start tonight the way we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, Jean?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Jean. And Jean, would you please read the vision statement that guides all of our work?
Certainly. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right, so first, next up, we have the consent agenda for the purpose of discussion. Could I have a motion to accept?
Move.
Thank you. Any discussion, anything that you've not talked with Nancy or Stu about, we're gonna bring up here. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so great, thank you. All right, next up, we have public comment, and public comment is a time for people to share information that is of interest to all, should not be agenda items that we're going to be discussing tonight. Please try and keep your comments to three minutes, and we'll ask you to share your information, and then please take a seat, and if there's any response that is needed, we'll try and do that, but again, it's not a time for discussion, so please keep that in mind. I have some people that have already signed up, and I see some other people have walked in who might, in fact, also want to comment, so after we go through the two people that are on the list, I'll open it up for anyone else who has, wants to make a comment. So, first up is Mike Lemire. Is it Lemire?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. This is my first time at a select board meeting. I recently retired, and I have a couple of things that I would like to share with the board.
Hey, Mike, put the microphone right up to your...
Just for my perspective. Number one, the old junior high, they have got to figure out the parking there way before they ever go forward with this. And one suggestion I've looked at is making Pleasant Street one-way from Park up to Main. And then you could probably park cars on both sides of the street, and traffic could still get through. Okay? I mean, I went and looked, the rec center has 80 spaces with no housing. We're gonna do the junior high with 60-some-odd spaces with 40 units of housing, and then if they put a gymnasium in, traffic is gonna be, there's gonna be no place for them to go. Okay? My second one, Upper Willow, I would like to see funds created for bleachers and outhouses up there. Because if you have a kid's game, or they have a tournament, there's no places for the people to sit. Due to the terrain, the outhouses at Willow Park are like 300 yards away. Okay? That's just my take on it. Same thing for the splash pad. I went there at the last show, had grandkids with us and all that, it was very good, I would go again, and I mentioned to the lady running it, Jenny, I said, Jenny, they built this place without an outhouse? Oh, no, there's one over there. Well, it was locked because somebody OD'd in it, on more than one occasion, from what I'm told. Okay, that's fine, but just let somebody unlock the thing for the three hours the splash pads in existence, and then lock it back up. One of my other concerns is, if you're on North Street headed south, as soon as you go through the light, there's two parking places on the right-hand side that are not parking places, and there's always somebody either dropping somebody off, or picking somebody up, or running into the coffee shop, and it's gonna cause a problem, in my opinion. I would like to see either two orange cones put out there, a jersey barrier, so that nobody could park there. And fifth, I should've gotten here earlier for this one, the cemetery that got vandalized, in my opinion, the town of Bennington should've offered up $1,000 reward, but somebody out there knows who did this, and they should be held accountable. And if they ever wanted to put up a $1,000 reward, I'd be the first one to drop a check off for $100 towards that $1,000 reward. That's, there's nothing more despicable than that. That's, you know, they always said, if you're gonna do a crime, make sure you can do the time and make it worth your while. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, the next up is Donald Waschman.
Hi, Todd, my name's Donald Waschman. My comment is really about the public comments so early in your meeting without some of the agenda being presented. Now, maybe it's just me, or maybe, you know, it's the format, but it's very concerning to me, because a lot of times I come to the meeting, I don't even want to put my name on the list, I want to hear what's going on, and then after I hear what's going on, then I can make a determination if I want to get up and speak. And that's something that I think I would respectfully suggest that you take a look at, because a lot of people come to these meetings, and they don't get up and speak because public comments are so early in the meeting. And you know, if facts are facts, you know, questions are statements, you know, then people can get information, it can go back and forth. That's all I'm saying. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
So, to clarify the way public comment works, public comment is early in the meeting because it's for items that are not on the agenda. We allow public comment, and in fact, encourage public comment on any agenda item. So you don't need to sign up to have, to share your thoughts on things that are actually on the agenda, okay? So this is, this is to let us know if there are things that we should put on a future agenda, or just to give us great suggestions for what we need to do, so...
Respectfully, could I have a talk about the Ben High project, can I?
But please, just come on up to the...
Yeah, so that's not on the agenda, so this would be the proper time to make a comment about that.
One of the concerns that I have about that project is...
About what?
Ben High?
Oh, about Ben High, okay.
I would like, you know, you guys meet twice a month, and I think that, in a respectful way, if we could be updated about that project, whether it be monthly or bi-weekly, because, you know, we've had other projects that, and I'm not here to smash anybody for mistakes that were made when they were made, what I'm saying is, is that, I think this is a, this is a project that's got a lot of moving parts to it, and if you don't stay on top of it, I think that you're gonna be, you know, you could find yourself bamboozled in the end, you know? And I hate to see that happen, because I think it's a good project, like, you know, I was at one of the presentations here, and I thought, Jesus, you know, this could be good for Bennington, you know? So, that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, so I'm thinking we probably are coming up on another update soon anyway, so we'll check in with Dan on that. Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Sean, I see you're here, were you wanting to speak?
Good evening, everyone. Hope everybody's okay tonight. I just wanted to get up here briefly and just talk about...
Introduce yourself.
Oh, everybody knows me. My name is, my name is Sean Pratt, I'm a resident, work at the middle school, been here for over 30 years, been a resident, been in trouble, all kind of things, so what I wanted to talk to you guys tonight about was the fact that, right now, I have a basketball team, right now, it's been in, this is our second year, and we're doing really well, as opposed to what I thought it was gonna be when we first started. Like I said, it was just a thought in my head, just something that I thought about, something that I thought that would help the community, that would help other young men, and, you know, it was a dream in the beginning, but it's really working out. You know, at first, there was some things going on with the, with the facility, and, you know, but I worked it out. And like I said, things been going great these years, these days now, but we've been at the middle school, and, you know, we, the thing about it is, we just need more support, need a little more support. We getting some people to come to the games, but it's nearly not enough to what we think could be there, so we just need more support, we need Cat TV to be able to come to the games, we need, and, you know, Jeanne, you've been to the game, a couple of games, so, you know, it's an exciting thing, and it's gonna bring more people to the town, it's gonna bring more people to come to see what we do, because by and large, a lot of people that come through this town, just come right through, and they don't stop. So we want to bring more people, we want to bring more businesses, because there's really not a lot of businesses here in Bennington, so for the people that's here that have been to the game, they already, they know how exciting the games are. We have one guy right now that's playing in Slovenia, making some good money, so this is real serious, guys. So I would just say, we need more support, more backing, I don't know what that looks like, but just, you know, like, I haven't heard from the chamber, I haven't heard from anyone.
So, Sean, can you, can you, so, Bennington Martins, how do people find out what your schedule is, and where do you play, and when?
We play up at the middle school, we play on Sat-, either Saturday or Sunday, it'll be on the schedule, we play at 3 o'clock, tip-off is at 3, we let people in at 2. We're a part of the American Basketball Association, which has been revived back in 2000, run by Commissioner Joseph Newman, what else we need to know?
How do you, how do they find the schedule?
Website, you can get on our website, BenningtonMartinsABA.org.
And Martins is with an E, M-A-R-T-E?
M-A-R-T-E-N-S.
Martins is in the animal, yes.
Yep, it's a Martin, Benning, Martins, yeah.
How much does it cost to go to a game?
It's $10 for adults, $5 for kids, and for the middle school kids, they get in for free.
Okay, okay. When's your season stop? Like, when, what's...
Oh, March 5th is the, the first week in March, which would be March 5th, March 4th, 5th, that'll be the last game of the season, and then we go playoffs from there, if we qualify.
So do you have a home game this weekend?
We have, yes, we play the 413 Elite, which is out of Springfield, Mass.
On what day?
On Sunday, at 3 o'clock.
On Sunday at 3?
Sunday at 3.
All right, so Sunday at 3, be there for the Martins.
Hey, Sean, would the, does the banner publish your schedule for you?
I could do that also, and I actually did ask him to do that, but I'll send him another email saying, saying that, so everybody can have it.
Good, okay. So that's Sunday at 3 at the middle school in Bennington?
Sunday at 3 at the middle school.
Yeah.
Okay, last week, we beat the number 15 in the nation, so we've come a long way.
I think Tortoise has a question for you.
I think there are games in town, and 18th, August.
Yes, so...
So Sean, repeat that, because Cat TV can only hear what goes in the microphone. So the games are when?
The games are on Sunday at 3 o'clock, this Sunday at 3 o'clock, but depending on the schedule, which I will be getting out to everyone, and like I said, you can get on BenningtonMartinsABA.org, that'll give you the schedule of the games, some of the game, most, all the games that we have at home will be at 3 o'clock, at the middle school, and it'll either be Saturday or Sunday, no other days.
Can you say December 10th and December 18th?
Bennington Martins will be playing December 10th and December 18th at the middle school at 3 o'clock.
Perfect.
See you there.
Great, all right.
All right.
So hopefully, everyone in this room, and everyone out in Cat TV land, will be there.
Hopefully. Thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else that has a public comment? No, then we will move on to the next agenda item, which somehow I've lost. Oh, okay, all right, so, oh, okay, so next up, we have Bennington College students to talk about rail car storage. The lights have been dimmed, and we are ready to roll.
Good evening, my name is Isabel Harper, I'm a resident of Bennington, and I'm a student at Bennington College. I just want to say, thanks so much again for your time, we really, really appreciate the opportunity to come and return to the select board and expand a little bit on this issue. Next slide, please. So just very briefly, my three main points from the last select board meeting were that, number one, there is an inherent risk of having LPG oil train cars in our community, the second is that they don't provide any benefit to the members of our community, and the third is that we feel that there are common sense solutions to this problem that can be implemented by this board. Next slide, please, thank you. So, just so we're all clear on the status of these trains, for the last five years, between 60 and 120 LPG tanker cars have been parked on a neglected rail line from Lake Perrin to the Bennington bypass, from July to December. Each tanker holds around 30,000 gallons of pressurized, non-odorized liquid petroleum gas. On Rice Lane is where these cars are parked, and they're roughly 75 feet away from homes. And finally, Earth Justice estimates that 20 LPG tankers contain the explosive power of a Hiroshima-sized nuclear bomb. This is kind of an updated version of the graphic that we passed out at the last select board meeting, that actually shows where the train cars are parked, and a conservative estimate of what a blast radius would look like. In order to illustrate the magnitude of this threat, I'd like to emphasize a couple of cases that show while they are rare, when explosions happen, they completely devastate the communities that they're in, and they overwhelm emergency response efforts. In fact, the fire in Pennsylvania caused by the conduction of two of the exact same type of LPG tankers that sit on Rice Lane demonstrates that the standard practice for a response to this kind of fire is just retreat. Blasts inflict bodily injury up to a mile away, and property damage very easily runs into the millions. And these accidents do happen locally. In the past three years, there have been two derailments, one in Husick Falls and one in North Bennington. Both of the derailments occurred within 100 meters of steep, rocky embankments, and within a quarter mile of village centers, meaning that if they were a little further down the line, they could've rolled down the embankment and very likely would've ruptured. So frankly, it's remarkable that these accidents weren't more severe. So we know you've discussed these trains before in the past, and ran up on this issue of jurisdiction due to federal preemption of interstate rail lines? If you could, thank you. So, to clarify, federal preemption prevents cities and states from passing laws that can interfere with interstate commerce by rail. Trains moving on rail lines are considered in transit, meaning they are under the exclusive jurisdiction of the federal government. For oil trains, this means that cities and states are unable to issue new rules to address the risks these oil trains introduce to their communities. However, our class reached out to Representative Welch and Senator Leahy, and they spoke to the Federal Rail Administration about our specific situation, and the Federal Rail Administration said that the termination of the way bill in Bennington moved the cars from active transportation into storage, and once a car is removed from transportation and moved into storage, federal preemption does not apply, and the storage of the cars can be governed by applicable local regulations. We feel that applicable, applicable local regulations includes health and safety ordinances issued by this board. So basically, the select board can pass ordinances that regulate the contents of the train cars, just not the cars themselves, like how big they are, that kind of thing. Great, so it is our recommendation that you pass an ordinance that either prohibits the storage of non-odorized liquid petroleum gas in quantities over 25,000 gallons within 1,000 meters of homes, schools, and hospitals, or prohibits the storage of more than 10,000 gallons of flammable gas without road access. And we also recommend including a punitive fine of $1,000 for every 10,000 gallons of LPG over the allowed amount per day. Of course, these are just our suggestions, and we are more than happy to answer any questions, and we're also very available to continue to engage with you in the future meetings, and/or assist in the drafting process of an ordinance. We've also sent your way the materials from this presentation, so again, thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board? Do you have one? Okay, go ahead.
Now it's, this one doesn't work at all. Okay, have you run across any actual examples of jurisdictions such as this, such as ours, that are, that have in fact passed such a regulation or ordinance in their jurisdiction that, that worked? Have you, have you found any incidences of those?
No, not that I'm aware of. I know in Washington State, after a derailment very nearly destroyed a middle school, the state level attempted to pass regulation, but they ran up against the problem of federal preemption.
Preemption is, is, it's a huge issue.
But that was in transit?
That was in transit. These parks are in storage.
Well, okay, so that's my, that's gonna be my second question, and my understanding, I understand the difference between being in transit and not being in stor-, that is, being in storage. Could you say again who it was that issued an opinion that said that since the way bill, way bill ended here in Bennington, I was trying to figure out, it came up quickly, and I don't have that kind of memory anymore.
Yeah, it was the...
Who at the Federal Rail Administration said that?
The ladies' office summarized it, and they said that they forwarded us an email, we're happy to forward it to all of you.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, you gotta use the microphone, and...
David Bond, assisting my wonderful, talented teachers, or you are my teacher, but I'm...
Yep.
Leahy and Welch's office reached out to the Federal Rail Administration, which has oversight over the national rails.
Yes.
They issued this opinion, which, this is their words that we're quoting, the Federal Rail Administration, and we're happy to share that email with all of you, that says, in their view, once the, once the destination card is removed from the tanker, it is no longer in transit, and federal preemption no longer applies to the contents of those tankers.
Right, so, which, which had led me, well, finally, to my sort of last question, which is, does anybody know if in fact the way bill card has been removed from those cars?
Yes.
So you've actually gone in, and you have pictures of the, where they should be, and they are not.
They've been, there's no destination card on the, on the tankers.
That's what, that's what I mean, that's what I'm looking for, because that's a critical factual matter. Okay.
So can I ask then, if, if the point of storing the cars here is so that they can be deployed rapidly as needed, so they're not having to travel from a longer distance, then are they really, are they really not in transit, just their final destination hasn't been determined? Is that murky, or is that known? Is that what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, but I don't think they're in transit, I'll...
I mean, I get they're standing still, but...
No, 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 it's, it's a much more technical question than that.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it does have everything to do with the way bill, at least in park.
Okay.
Right, just to add to that, I, I think that, you know, very technically, they are in storage, given that their way bill expired here, but also, LPG that is not in transit, there are quite a few regulations, because it is so highly flammable of how it is meant to be stored, and having it on these trains in our community kind of bypasses those regulations for safety about, you know, how close public, I guess, you know, houses and that kind of thing can be to it. So if, if they were to be properly stored while they are in storage, that would require building a facility, or holding them at a facility.
So, yeah, I think, if you can, yeah, I'll go to use next, Sarah, but if you can send us the email, and I think if it doesn't give a particular person, if you can go back to Leahy's office and get, yeah, who this is actually from, rather than just the agency, that would be really helpful.
What agency?
Well, this was from the Federal Rail Administration. Did you, Dan, did you want to share?
Yes, to clarify, actually, um, Dan, I'm assistant town manager, so actually, we received this email, this exact same language last year, I think, and it was forwarded to everyone at the board at the time. It goes on to say, unfortunately, that it, there's case, there's significant case law that would limit us with regard to regulation, still to be, we'll have to look at it and be, and to analyze it, but last we checked with our attorney, they would want to see the way bill itself, and then review the case law. I will have to say, the case law is pretty, makes it look like it's gonna be pretty difficult to regulate this, which is probably why they, there aren't any other ordinances that we can point to around the country that does this, but once we get the way bills from Welch's office, which we requested, we'll send that on to our attorney, and she'll take a look at it, but the case law is gonna make it an uphill battle for us.
And so you have, the town has requested...
Yep, we've requested the way bill from Congress, or Senator Alex Welch's office.
Great, okay.
They also gave, I actually got some information today from them on a, on another avenue that we could take to get the way bill, so I'll pursue that, but this is the exact language we were sent last year, it went on to list case law, which made it seem very unlikely that we'll be able to regulate it, but we'll have our attorney take a look at it once we get the way bill.
And, and I should just ask that if you have documentation, and you have, so for instance, photographs of cars without way bills, et cetera, if you forward that, and as well?
Sarah, did you have a question?
So the proper storage of these, to me, seems like it would be in a yard. Is that accurate, from what you've been studying?
The proper storage?
Yes.
It's clear that these tanker cars are being used to store the gas. There are regulations, if you want to build a storage facility for liquid petroleum gas, they're costly, they require certain built-in safeguards, they require road access all the way around, they require a berm, so that if gas does leak out, which is low-lying, it's contained, a fencing system, certain fire hydrants, a whole host of things, and they have distance sighting requirements of how close they can be to hospitals, schools, and residential areas. If you put it on a train and park a train in the middle of a residential neighborhood, all of those are sort of waved away, and it's, it's a confusing area, I understand what you're saying, but it's a confusing... I understand what you're saying, but it's a confusing area. And we think the trains are using a gray area to their advantage. And the town can sort of foreground public safety in a way that's common sense, it's reasonable, we all understand they shouldn't be there, and that we are understanding is the Federal Rail Administration, which is the one... The agency that has jurisdiction over that, will support the town if they sort of put together an ordinance that bans the storage of this gas in our residential neighborhoods.
Thank you. I thank you for doing all this research, and I very much agree with you, these should not be in the yards where they are, not the our yards. They should be in more of a different type of yard, yeah, rail yard sort of area with storage.
Gary, Tom, Jim, any questions? So, Dan, are you... So are... Do we have new information at this point? We do not. This is exactly what we looked at last year. Okay? And so what might be different is looking at the way bills? Yeah, okay. So...
Federal preemption is pretty... I mean, all our rail operations are set for local scale.
Yeah.
We'd have to find a pretty clear path.
Yeah.
Same couldn't, but nothing.
Okay. And I think it's going back to Bruce's question of whether anyone else has cracked his nut.
No, I couldn't find anybody. Just if I can add one more thing.
I don't want us to make federal preemption just because it's being, I think, misused in this area. You know, yes, are the railroad companies or petroleum companies using that? Yes. But quite frankly, interstate commerce is a federal preemptive... It is subject to federal preemption for a reason. And the reason, you could go back to civil rights and the transportation across state lines of almost anything, and the feds took... Have that authority under the Constitution in part so that local municipalities will not set up systems that discriminate against others from coming in or leaving. And so while I think it's being misused here, I do think federal preemption in this area in general makes a lot of sense. Doesn't, to me, here at all. But I don't want us to make federal preemption in the area of interstate commerce to be the enemy. That's the only thing I'm trying to say, because I think it's an incredibly effective tool to fight discrimination and the nimbyism that can happen to those of us in local communities.
Does any... So is there any role for our federal delegation in this? Was that put to Leahy, Welch?
That's actually the only folks who really have a chance. I think, very likely. Thank you. I mean, if we can go back to the slide, what we got this, we feel like the ball keeps getting thrown back and forth, that we go to the federal delegation, and they say it's actually you guys' job to take the first step, they'll support it. We go to you. They say, "Go to the federal delegation." We go to them. They say, "Come back to the Select Board." So, I mean, everybody agrees it's a problem, including the federal delegation. But it'd be really great if we could get on the same page and find ways of working together to do something about the issue.
So has... Actually, has... Have Leahy and Welch said that they think we have the authority to do something? No, that is not what that says.
It says, "Federal preemption does not apply if it's in storage."
Except it's half the... Except it's only half of the email. I mean, that's...
I'm happy to provide the whole email. I know there was some case law attached, I didn't go through that, but the Federal Rail Administration is saying, "Federal preemption does not apply in this case." And they were talking specifically about the Bennington case.
So we would be very happy to have Welch and Leahy have more conversation with us, because, you know, as we indicated last time, this is not... This is a very disturbing issue to all of us. We are all on the same page in terms of what we would like to see happen. However, we have not gotten any indication that we can do what we are all wanting to do, and that is working, I think, pretty diligently with Merrill Bent, our town council, in trying to figure this out. So if Welch or Leahy have an avenue here, you know, we are totally in favor of that. They have not come to us and said, "The ball's in your court, you know, you guys need to do the first step." That has not been the conversation over the last couple of years. So, you know, so I don't want to... I feel uncomfortable characterizing it that way, because that does not seem to be what's going on. We all want to do this, we just can't find an avenue to do it.
And let me...
Go ahead.
Can I add one more?
Yeah.
I will say, I remember reading the cases from a year ago, and it is not... Yet, it may very well be that the federal... There's somebody in the Federal Rail Administration that thinks it's... That preemption doesn't apply. But they don't make the final decision by a long shot.
Yes.
So if we take this on, this is what I want everybody in the room to understand, if we were to take this on, it's not the Federal Rail Administration that we're going to be fighting. It's going to be the rail companies and the gas companies, and they've got deep pockets. And I'm not sure that the town of Bennington has those kind of deep pockets, and that is an issue that matters. Okay?
Yeah. Well, and in addition, I mean, you want it to be something that you could win.
I want to win, right? And I'm not sure we will.
Okay. So Al, it looks like you have a question. Did you want to... Yeah, please.
So, first of all, I really want to thank our students and David Bond for bringing this issue up again. This is Bennington's issue, you know, and... But it's not only Bennington's issue. There are communities all across the country that have this issue. So if we move our tanker cars out of Bennington, and they end up in Housick Falls, I mean, who are we helping? We're helping ourselves, but we're not helping Housick Falls. I say, play the long game and put some pressure on our elected officials in Congress to look at this issue as a public... A national public health issue. If rail companies can store dangerous cars anywhere they want, Bennington's not the only community that's going to suffer from this. And I just wonder if Senator-elect Welch, if Senator Sanders or others would be willing to take this to Congress and see what they can do in terms of wrestling support for the issue here. It's not only Bennington's issue, it's a national issue. And maybe this will take years, but that's playing the long game, and perhaps maybe we should look at it in that way. That's it.
Thank you.
And thanks.
Very good point. So in terms of next steps, I think we've got two that I've heard thus far. One is to look at the way bill and see if there's anything there that helps us get these rail cars out of here. And then the other is the long game, which I... The federal delegation does seem to be the people who have the power, or at least, you know, the advocacy role to try and make change here.
Yeah, it should be nonpartisan.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be nonpartisan.
It should be nonpartisan. What a concept.
You think...
No.
Blow it up, sort of, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, we totally agree, and I do appreciate... I appreciate you bringing it up again, I appreciate the work that you're doing, you know, and I think it is a shared... It's a shared goal to stop this idiocy.
Right. And I really quickly want to emphasize and thank you for your comment. I do think we completely agree that this is a national issue, and it's, to use your phrase, a nut that has not been cracked yet. And I think that if it were... If you were to take this on as an ordinance under your jurisdiction of health and safety of the town of Bennington, I think that it... I mentioned this briefly at the last Select Board meeting, but it could act as a model for other communities to take on when they're also faced with this issue, if they were to go from Bennington to somewhere else like Housick Falls.
But we can only do an ordinance if it can be enforced. So that's... I mean, that's a chicken and egg. I did want to ask you, on your ordinance, how did... Why did you choose the amounts that you chose?
So, part of the reason that we chose this amount is because we wanted it to be per gallon rather than per car, just because we felt that the fact that it's non-odorized liquid petroleum gas was really significant. Non-odorize is for industrial use and not commercial use. And we also were looking at what the actual value on these train cars is and what would actually be impactful to...
So, does 25,000 gallons equate to something in terms of a tanker?
So currently, on the cars, there's around 30,000 gallons. So we picked a number that was around there. And again, these are our suggestions, just because that is a number obviously far larger than what would just be, like, a can that someone has for commercial use.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to say one thing. I can't think of anything off the top of my head, but I would imagine there are ordinances and procedures under many, many departments of the federal government that err on the side of safety and health, and this one doesn't. It just, you know, you could cite probably hundreds, thousands of ordinance... Of ordinances and whatever you want to call them, that do what they should do, and use those as an example. Well, in this case, this ordinance is in place to protect safety, and this one somehow has fallen through the cracks. And, you know, consistency is everything in this sort of thing.
For sure.
Yeah.
So, John, did you have a question or a comment? Please come on up.
Hi, I'm John Lamson. I'm in the blast radius in North Bennington. And I just wanted to say that when you go, it is, in my view, it is important when you go to an attorney to ask a question in a certain way. And if the town is looking at saying to their attorney, you know, "What do you think about this?", that's a different question when the attorney does the research and says, "Well, here's what I think," as opposed to the town saying, "We're interested in taking this case on. We're interested in passing an ordinance that says they can't store this amount of petroleum in this area, and so we want legal support for that position." Not, "What, do you think it's a good idea or not?", but, "Can we have a legally justifiable position?" And I think that's a different... Those are two different questions, because... And they're important distinctions to make, I guess. So I would ask that the board consider that when they make a decision about, you know, seeking the advice of the town attorney.
Well, and so, I mean, Dan, I'm putting you on the spot a lot, I know, but I'm just wondering, I mean, last year, we went to Merrill saying, "We want to do something about this, what can we do?", yes? I mean, I'm just wondering if you want to share any of the thought of sort of where the town is and...
Actually, I was working with Rob Wilmington at the time, and so we left it at the case law that we got from Welch and Leahy's office, which pretty much appeared to shut the door. And then, as you know, every year, the propane tanks disappeared. So now it's become... Come up again. And one of the things that Rob was very interested in seeing was the way bills. We were not able to get them from Welch's office last year, but we are, again, attempting to get them this year. And hopefully those will shed some more light. Again, we would have to... The question to them is, can we pass an enforceable ordinance, or will it be preempted by the federal preemption document premise? So that's the question. And we don't have any interest in passing an ordinance that can't stand up to scrutiny.
Do we know why we could not get the way bill from Welch's office last year?
I think it just fell through the cracks.
Okay, so...
I think it was one of those things where they thought that they were going to get it, they thought they were going to get it.
Okay. So maybe that's another area where we could use the class support.
I wouldn't put a lot of... I wouldn't put a lot of hope on the way bill.
Okay.
But it's just another piece of the puzzle. Yeah. But it's actually the case laws, what's the most difficult to overcome, even if we assume that they're truly in storage on a rail spur owned by the railroad. So that's what we have to look to see. The question really is, there's an exemption for federal preemption when it comes to police And so there's... All that has to be looked into. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So I mean, I think it's worth continuing to see what's possible, and, you know, it feels like maybe we're a little further this year in that we're... You're likely to see the way bill. I don't know what...
We don't want the way bill to have to do... We'll have to do the analysis, you're going to...
Okay. But I think if you guys have... If you have data that you can forward to the town, that would be helpful, because, you know, as I keep saying, we're all...
We're happy to share everything that we have. And my recollection, you know better than me, but the case law that we looked at, it was mostly cases where it was in transit. No? Okay.
I actually had to do assault storage on them on property owned by the railroad, not even on the railroad track. They said that Shell, or any state, no jurisdiction whatsoever to permit that that takes assault storage.
I thought that was a separate thing with assault. Right, assault?
Yeah.
I thought there were...
And that one actually was not even on the tracks, it was on property owned by the railroad. It's a really tough law for permitting, but, yeah. We can see...
Yeah.
Jane?
Please do sign anything you have that's actually...
It's me.
Oh, Stu, yes.
Well, I just... Really, the issue is not the storage, it's what's in the tankers.
Right.
And if we can regulate what's in the tankers, then that would deal with the problem.
Yes. And that is what that ordinance... What the proposed ordinance was intending to do.
Well, we've been talking about storage, storage, storage. It's not really the storage that matters. It's what's inside.
What they're storing.
Yeah. I hope none of you are graduating.
Great.
Not yet.
No, because next year, we're going to have a party, because there'll be no rail cars. Okay.
But we will say, I mean, every year, the trains are allowed to be parked in our community is another year that we risk a catastrophic accident. And we've already had two derailments with the LPG fully, you know, full of LPG.
Yeah, we do get it.
And it's like, every year is us waiting and hoping that something catastrophic doesn't happen to our community.
Well, and I think the really, like, upsetting... One of your earlier slides demonstrated that even when something catastrophic happens, it doesn't change. It has not yet changed the outcome of where cars are stored. So, yeah, I mean, we are definitely... It's an outrageous... It's an outrageous situation.
I'm thinking there's a protest coming our way.
In the blast zone, right, John? Yes. Okay. So let's continue to do homework and uncover as much as we can, and I think bug our delegation.
Yeah, I think that's the main thing, and I would like to say, we can certainly do our best to try to do something as a small community, but the only folks who have the real authority is the Congress. And if we shouldn't... We should be counting on Welch, Leahy, and now Becca Ballant to really take this up for us, because that's where we can make some real difference. I think it's a really long... A really, really big long shot for us to think that we'll be able to control this locally. Not to say it might not happen, but I think it's really unlikely. We'll be looking with our attorney, but the pressure really needs to go to the federal delegation, because they're the ones that can do something about it. Definitely can do something.
And to Al's point, that we may be able to regulate it in our small community, but there are hundreds, if not thousands, of other communities that are facing it.
We got to have the whole community participate, so we can actually have a political coalition at the congressional level.
Have you had any correspondence with other communities where rail cars are stored? With...
No. There's other communities... When I wrote the opinion piece in 2017, again, 2019, I got emails from other communities in Vermont. There's actually a handful of communities in Vermont. They seem to pick rural, out-of-the-way places where they store 100 to 120 of these tanker cars. Also, Albany, if anybody's been to Albany recently, they're stored all up and down the highway. Albany became, I think, the seventh biggest deep-water export port for petrochemicals. And so they have an issue, and there's a handful of other communities up and down the East Coast and elsewhere that have these tankers being stored. I mean, folks remember, but they were stored in the Adirondacks for a while, and Governor Cuomo decided to make a personal issue out of it and would go and host press conferences in front of the cars, demanding the train companies move them. And was quite effectively at shaming them, but I fear he shamed them across the border.
That's what we tell them, because they're listening to them all, like those people are ashamed of them.
Yeah. Yeah. It just feels like, to your point... It just feels like, I mean, to your point, I mean, the, it makes sense to also start building a coalition of communities that, that are interested in this issue. Yeah. All right. All right. So I think it feels to me like probably at this point, we should do, work on getting the way bill, work on talking with the delegation and seeing what their thoughts are, and, and perhaps also doing some, figuring out how to do some outreach to other communities that might be impacted, that might make us not just one itty-bitty little community.
Thank you so much again.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
And whatever information you have in order, please just pass it on, of course, yeah. Thanks.
Well, that was very sobering. But good. All right. Next up, do we have anything under implementing the town vision for this meeting? Right. CPAR is chugging along. Ideal Vermont's chugging along. Okay. ADA is in place, and hopefully we'll see it in the next budget, new, new steps there. All right. Well, then that brings us to the manager's report.
Thank you. Very quickly, I have no action items for you tonight, but I do have some information regarding three water system projects. These projects have all been identified as, by the staff, as Tier Two projects in our ARPA funding, which means they didn't qualify to be done with ARPA funds, but we have continued to work with our engineers to try to get them recognized and funded at the state level. And I'm happy to say that these three projects have met a requirement to be funded. The first is the water main extension to Settlers Road and Spring Hill development. It will be funded 100% by the state of Vermont. The town will do the project. It does not require bonding, but we will be 100% reimbursed. So that project will be going forward in the next construction season. Engineering will begin very soon, although I think most of that is probably pretty much done. The second two projects are projects we've been working on for a time. The South End Project, which is the project that brings us fully into compliance with our water system permit at the higher elevations in the community, Crescent Boulevard, Jefferson Heights. We still have pressure problems, and we've been working to address those over time, budgeting approximately $400,000 a year to do a portion of those projects. They have now been recognized by the state as potentially reimbursable, not at 100%, but I think it's at 90% or 95% depending on the grant program. But we must bond for those. The beauty of bonding for those projects is that we then reduce the amount of annual payments substantially. We're paying for the remaining $1.6 or $1.4 million over 20 years as opposed to trying to do it in $400,000 loops. So it actually will have a positive impact on the water system should the bonds be approved by the voters in March. The last project is the Gage Street Water Main Replacement Project. This project's been identified for years. The main that serves Gage Street is undersized and creates pressure problems throughout that neighborhood, but also adds to the pressure problems we have at the higher elevations. So that too has been recognized by the state as something that they would help us fund, and that will become part of the bond issue in March. I think we'll be, probably be looking for something in the range of $3 million in bond payments, in bond monies payable over 20 years. The state has a very specific formula. You pay twen-, uh, twenty, I'm sorry, 5% of the principal, and the interest reduces over time. So it gives us a very, a much better handle on what we're going to be budgeting every year, and we'll be able to get those projects done at a much more affordable way than just trying to do it within the town budget. Second thing I have is the Riverwalk redesign and upgrade. There is a meeting tomorrow morning. Some of my staff are involved reviewing the project that the state has agreed to fund for moving forward with a formal design and bidding process for the next construction season. And this would be a wider paved pathway and adding lighting to make it safer along certain parts of the path where lighting is, is insufficient. Other amenities such as benches and those kinds of things will be added at a later date depending on what we can, what kind of bids we get on the project itself. So I'm happy to say that project is moving forward. It's one that we've been recognized for years as, as a need, and the state is going to help us pay for it. And as most of you now know, the Benmont Avenue project, at least is finalized in Benmont Avenue. They still have some cleanup to do on their construction site and their, their, the site where they stored all of their equipment and where the water line actually crossed to the main itself. They will be moving up Depot Street over the next several weeks. They've already moved 60 feet up Depot to connect, I'm sorry, county to connect to Depot. But that project is hopefully going to be finished before Christmas. So that is good, that's good news, and I think we're all pretty pleased to see Benmont Avenue paved and not quite such a mess as it was. And that's all I have.
Stu, would you mind if I just let Kelly Clark know, Kel-, Carol, Kelly, Carol, Carol, um, Kelly, Kelly Carroll know about the meeting tomorrow? Just-
Is it a staff meeting only?
No, 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 not that she would go, just that she knows it's happening.
Yeah.
Do you mind? Okay.
If we announce it.
Yeah. She's not here. I thought maybe she would be here, and she's not. So if you don't mind, I'd like to just let her know the meeting's happening.
No problem at all. Please do.
All good news. Good. Yay. Okay. So, any questions from the board, the manager's report? No? Okay. So, upcoming agendas. We really, really promise Green Mountain Express is on the next agenda.
Okay.
Um, yeah, this last time, yeah, it was our error. And the Bennington Free Library is coming to talk about some new acquisitions from grant funding that they received. Anything else that we've got?
Green Mountain Express, did you mention the Green Mountain Community Network?
Yes, the Green Mountain Express will be coming.
Yeah, yeah, they will be coming.
Maybe they are.
They, honest, they are.
And the library. Anything else? Anything?
I think in the, in the long term, Jeanie, a, a, as you know, we're talking about these bond issues. I think it would be helpful for the community to have MSK Engineering and representative thereof come to us, perhaps in the first meeting in January, to talk about the, the actual projects and what they mean to the community. And then the last meeting in January, we would be signing the warning, which would include the language for the vote.
Okay.
But that way, the, the community gets to understand what the projects really are and how they benefit the community and what, what actual annual savings we might see by doing it this way.
Perfect. Okay. That sounds great.
And can, the budget meetings would be the first Saturday, first and second Sat-, third and third Saturday in January?
Yeah.
Yeah?
At present, they would be scheduled for the 7th, 14th, and 21st if necessary.
Okay.
Okay.
And we would ask you to sign the warning on the 23rd of January, which would be our last regular scheduled meeting in January.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Just wondering about, we have a, just a process scheduled for responding to us regarding less, just an update status for a municipal project, for the whole, the high project.
Yeah. Should we, should we do that the next meeting or?
Sign that we would do that. I mean, I can, I can give you an update any week you want, I'll, I'll, you can sign, but we can sort of leave you where we are, I think, for the month next year. Whichever one makes the most.
Yeah.
I, I'm not interested in doing it just to do it, but if, if in two meetings, if you would have, you think you would be much-
We have more meaningful information, so we're happy to update you anytime you ask.
But Dan, we could do it, so we could do it on the, I mean, I think, I think our second meeting in December is like the 28th or the 27th. It's right after Christmas, right? It's right between, isn't it? I mean-
It is. It would be scheduled-
Which is why we didn't want to have-
Twenty six.
Twenty six! All right. We are a jolly group.
Right. It's the 26th.
So we did-
And the 26th is actually a holiday for-
Twenty six is a holiday?
For town staff.
Well, we meet on holidays all the time, right?
Well, we may not meet on this holiday, but we'll talk. We could meet on the 19th.
So we can meet on the 19th?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we need, we, we are required to have two meetings a month.
Yeah.
We can push the meeting forward so that we're not pushing everybody around the Christmas holiday.
Should we do December 19th instead of the 26th?
So we can talk on the 19th.
Yeah. It's my birthday. It's your birthday! Always lands on my birthday. Always lands on my birthday. The budget meeting is-
It is for, it is for our greatest gift.
Oh, my gosh. You are the greatest.
I think, I think the 19th is much preferable to the 26th.
As long as there's cake, I'll be here.
Okay. We'll have cake. Okay? Okay.
I'll make a note, Jean. We need cake.
Chocolate.
Now, this is true. We have met on her birthday for something.
Chocolate.
Every year.
Has to be chocolate.
There isn't anything else but chocolate. I can tell you that in my world.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. So the, okay, so we're going to meet the second and third, the second and third Mondays in, in December. All right. Okay. And so maybe the 19th. Okay. So we'll do an update.
Whenever we go on the 19th, we'll share.
Okay.
Sounds good to me. I think we should just make sure.
All right. Okay. And anything else that might be?
Should we ask Trey for an update on one of those?
Sure. Sure. What's, what's your pleasure? The, the second, the, on the 12th?
I'm not going to be running the 19th.
So let's do, okay, let's do the 12th.
Trey.
Trey. A Trey update.
Trey.
Okay. So a COVID update. Okay.
Yeah, maybe he could come on the 12th, Jeanie.
Yeah. I'm, I'm putting him down there. Yeah. Okay. That's good. All right. So that's, that's enough. Then, any other business? Gary, anything?
I can't think of anything. No.
I do have one.
I, I can-
Yeah, that's one I don't have.
[laughing]
Are we planning any kind of opening, official opening? I know it's unofficially opened or slow opened or what do we want to call it, of the rail trail?
Spring.
Spring.
Is it inside Joe?
Well, see, I, yeah.
I think it was in the press release.
Was it in the press release that I didn't?
I can't remember what was in there, but I think we did say-
Okay. I may not have read all the way through the press release. Who knows?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. I, I like it, though.
All right. All right. So, good. So then, I think I want a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay.
How did we do this?
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.